At 7:00 PM on September 26th, 2017, I'd like to call the College Place City Council meeting to order. Mr. Peterson, would you mind saying our prayer and our pledge?
I'd love to. Dear Lord, thank you so much for the opportunity to live in this community. We ask that you bless us and that you guide our decisions and our decision-making this evening. We ask that you look over the entire valley and bless us in Jesus' name and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, before us, we have a consent agenda, approving this agenda, approving the council minutes from 9:12, 2017, approving the council workshop minutes from 9:20, 2017, the check register and financials for July, 2017, approving the absence of Mr. Dickerson and Liz Nyhagen, and finally approving the consent agenda.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in September. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Drury, who is a 10-year employee of the fire department, would you please come forward? We do have a small certificate for you.
Thanks.
Well, it's really fancy. And it looks like we got two camera cameras, so if you...
Well, one and a half.
One and a half.
Yeah.
I'm not sure which ones to have.
I am. You can't say yes.
I can't say no.
If you do have, will you have a pink for you? I also like to mention, in addition to being a 10-year fire department employee, Drury is also part of our running committee and has worked very hard to ensure that employees in the city keep healthy and continue to produce as much as we can, considering our little staff. Thank you very much.
Well done.
In that case, then, it's mandatory.
I have appreciated every day of the last 10 years that I've had the privilege of working here. And it's funny how, when you start in a place, you don't really know what the future has in store, but it's really become home. So, this is great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Don't seem too hard here for the certified local government's cars here.
I'll cover that because he ended up going to a training for certified local government with Historic Preservation Commission. So, basically, last week, we received notification we were officially approved to be a certified local government. So, thanks to Jack and the whole Historic Preservation Commission for that. That means we're now eligible for grants for historic preservation, as well as special property tax valuation, and a lot of other benefits for the state. So, I just wanted to inform the city council of that.
Thank you, Mr. Zatale. Questions for Mr. Zatale?
So, this is the end result of what we've talked about before, as far as...
Yes, many months ago, when we passed the Historic Preservation Ordinance and the Historic Preservation Commission, those were all various steps to pursue the certified local government. And it's a pretty rigorous process, get approved by the state. And now, we finally are. So, now, when they do the calls for grants and projects, and if we have developers or folks who pick up historic properties and want to rehabilitate them to historic standards, we now have an incentive tool to use to help them out.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Cleveland, go ahead.
I'm curious if we had anyone on the list?
Yeah.
Or are we preparing to get on the list of historic sites?
Currently, the Historic Preservation Commission is figuring out the outreach strategy. There are a couple of them.
It's a real good estate, Jack.
Exactly. We were waiting to get approved first to even see if we had the ability to do the valuation.
That does make sense.
Mr. Sullivan?
I would ask that you would pass on to the commission our thanks for all of your hard work and making this happen.
Will do. Seeing no other question, Ms. Gildor, estimated revenues and department expenditure requests.
Okay. So, this is a presentation of the estimated revenues for the rest of this year, 2017, and then what the budget is looking like so far for 2018 revenues and department expenditure requests. So, I'll just jump right in here, going through the budget calendar a little bit, so you have kind of a timeline perspective. July 11th, I requested department heads to provide me with their expenditure requests or to start working on those. They were due back to me by July 31st. And then, between July 31st and now, I have been preparing the preliminary budget. I've been estimating revenues and then consolidating all of the requests from all the department heads into one place, so that we could kind of see what's going on. And we also had a budget workshop where each of the department heads was present to kind of justify their requests, I guess you could say. Today is the presentation of the estimates of the rest of this year's revenues and then what the budget is looking like for next year. On October 10th, we'll have a public hearing on revenue sources and property tax revenues and possibly go ahead and authorize the property tax levy at that time. October 24th will be preliminary budget and budget hearing that will be presented. Then, November 28th will be final budget hearing, and then December 12th will be adoption of the budget. So, it's a lengthy process. Okay, just to recap really quick, a few basics about the budget. I go over this every year, but I feel like there's some value in doing it. So, just a reminder, we're cash basis, which means we recognize revenues when we actually receive the cash, and we recognize expenditure when we actually pay the bills. The only exception to that is an accrual period at the end of the year, which is actually the first 20 days of the following year, where we go ahead and leave our books open to make sure we capture everything for the previous year. We budget by fund, so each fund is basically like its own little business. It has its own beginning and ending balances, and its own revenues and expenditures, and they're each accounted for separately. And then, we do budget beginning fund balance and ending fund balance, which results in each fund being budgeted in full. So, beginning fund balance is budgeted as a revenue, ending fund balance is accounted for as an expenditure. The different types of funds. The first group is governmental funds, which is current expense, where most of our activities in the city happen. Then, special revenue funds, which is like our street fund, where we get the motor vehicle fuel tax. Dedicated revenue sources have to be posted in special revenue funds, so that's what those are for. Debt service funds, then we have capital project funds, and current funds are another type that we don't have. Proprietary funds would be our businesses, so our water utility, our wastewater utility, et cetera. And then, internal service funds are like our equipment rental and replacement fund, where all of our shop activities happen, and then it's kind of like reimbursed, billed out and reimbursed by the other departments. And then fiduciary funds are, we only have one of those, and it's for our flexible spending plan for the employees. So, our flex benefit deposits go in, and then they're paid back out of that fund. Okay, moving right along. So, this is a quick snapshot look at the projection of where I think our revenues are going to be as compared to budget by the end of the year. And I gave you guys a full page handout, because I know the print is pretty small and it'd be hard to see the actual numbers up on the screen. So, if you want to follow along on there, great. If not, that's fine, too. So, I'm going to start with current expense. I'm just kind of going to go down the line and kind of point out the big, the funds that have the big differences in the far right-hand column. So, current expense fund right now is tracking with about $385,000 more dollars in revenue than what we were expecting. And the bulk of that, I kind of did a little bit of digging, and about $100,000 of that is utility taxes have come in much higher than we expected. We were in receipt of a $53,000 sort of grant, like reimbursement, for our police department backfill for when our guys are at academy. So, that's the CJTC. And then permitting and plan check fees have been up, they're up $75,000 over budget. So, that's the bulk of that difference. And then, there's this little differences all through the fund. Next, I wanted to move down to the street improvement fund, 311, and point out, this one is tracking about a half million below budget, and that is because we did not move forward with the 4th street sidewalks and received those grant funds as reimbursements for expenditures this year as we planned. The next big one is the water capital reserve fund, and that's about $2.9 million under budget, and that is the same situation where we did not move forward with well number one, because our funding didn't come through the state budget. So, we budgeted for it, and it didn't come to fruition, so we have a big discrepancy there. And then, the water system construction fund, this is going to have a $2.2 million exit or greater amount of revenue than what we budgeted, and that's because we went ahead and upped our revenue bond issuance to the four and a half million instead of the 2 million. So, those are the big outstanding discrepancies. I think I may have missed 425 has like a $380,000 difference, and that's all tied to capital and transfers between funds to fund capital. So, overall, we are running behind budget by about $386,000, but really, we're doing pretty well, because the bulk of that has to do with those big capital projects. So, that means that our operations are running ahead of revenue budget. So, it's probably kind of confusing, but... This is a picture of what our projected ending fund balances for 2017 look like. Let's see, I wanted to point out at the bottom there in the blue column, we started the year with about $9.5 million, and we're estimating closing the year with a little over $11 million. And that is due to issuing those bonds. Are there any questions about 2017 before I move on to 2018?
Mr. Peterson? Is there an impact on these numbers based on the state's inability to move forward capital or maybe capital's the wrong characterization? But when they get back together, I guess, some more later this year to process the capital expenditures, does that impact these numbers at all, or is that outside of these?
Well, these numbers have these, I'm going to go back really quick. The big discrepancies like, which one's the pointer? I can't remember. Oops. Hello. There we go. It's the middle button.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I can't use this technology apparently. There we go. Okay, so, like, this one, for example, this is the fund that the well number one was budgeted in.
411?
Yeah, 4, no, 410.
Okay.
So, we budgeted that we would be receiving $3.3 million into that fund during the year, and that's because 3 million of that was the DOH loan.
Okay.
So, because we didn't receive it, it looks like we're way, running way behind budget on revenues, but we also didn't spend it. So, it's a wash.
Yes, because the state...
Because they held up the money by not adopting the capital budget.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's, so, yes, I mean, if they did, if something did happen in the last quarter of this year, which is highly unlikely, then if we did have time to start moving forward with the project, it's possible that these numbers could change, but at this point in the year, probably not. It'd probably just affect next year's budget. Does that answer your question?
Well, so, when I look at like 410 and 431, that's not a, that's not a wash. That's not, those are exclusive.
So, we are just looking at the revenues right now, not the expenditures. So, if I did a picture just like this, but of the expenditures, we would have the same thing here in the expenditure line for 410. We would have, it would show that we spent $2.9 million less than we budgeted to spend. So...
Let's see.
The revenues didn't come in because we didn't spend the money and ask for reimbursement. That's what I meant by it's a wash, as far as the fund balance goes. I don't know if I meant spending...
431 is a separate...
Right. So, okay.
No, go.
Yeah, 431 is a completely different construction fund. This is the fund that we had, like, some mainline replacements budgeted in and a couple other more minor things. And we had budgeted to issue the $2 million in revenue bonds, and we were actually supposed to have about a million and a half of that left over to roll into 2018. So, we weren't planning on spending all of it to begin with, but we're kind of a little bit late in issuing, so we haven't issued yet. And then, we decided to go with the 4.5, which that says 4.2, because it's taking out the amount that's paying off the refunding of the 2007 bonds, but...
So, if the state were to proceed typically or normally, the variance toward again at rate 86 would be greatly enhanced?
It would probably be, let's see, this would pretty much net out with, it would be about $800,000 under. I don't know, that's too...
Too far.
Abstract for my brain to do.
No, 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 I apologize. No, I, it's close right now.
So, we would be tracking, we would be doing better, it would be swinging the other way, if we didn't have those big products in there whacking it all out. Because we're actually running ahead on revenues in our operations versus what I budgeted for. So, I think if those products, if those two funds were taken out of the equation, we would show a positive number right here.
Yeah, this is what, yeah. As I see this, yeah, okay. Thank you so much. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I just...
So, this is very abstract, so...
No, you're good.
Thank you, thank you.
I just hope I can explain things.
You did, thank you.
Okay. Derek?
Oh, yeah. One other quick, more of a request for future. I would find it very helpful if we had operating funds and capital funds separated out, and then a general total, the subtotals. Because like, when we look at this, without doing a bunch of mental math, I can't tell how we're doing on our operating side.
Okay.
So, if we could have like operating, and then a subtotal, and then capital and a subtotal, and then an overall total, I think that would make it, it would make it easier for me to follow them.
Sure, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. So, start, I didn't mean for that thing to be on, I didn't mean for that to be there, sorry. Estimated revenues are coming in at around $20 million. Proposed expenditures are at about $24.3 million, and so, the net is a 4.0, almost $4.4 million spend down. And I wanted to point out that the street fund is suffering. We, it just, we just don't have the revenue that's dedicated to that coming in. I mean, we have, I have a $500,000 transfer right now already going from current expense to the street fund, and we're still 125 in the hole, and the actual fund is negative, has a negative balance right now. So, I just wanted to point that out. It relies so heavily on current expense, and that's also where most of our operations, our police, our fire, our administration, all of that come from, so it's a big burden Okay. This is a snapshot of departmental requests. So, just so you know that, we started last year the equipment replacement program, where the responsible departments transfer money from their department budget into fund 320 to fund the replacements of their equipment in the future. So, I wanted to let you know that those transfers are reflected in these numbers. I'm not going to go through each one of those, because I think it would really be boring, and I don't really have a lot to say about them right now. But it's just a snapshot, you can refer to it later, go through it. If you have any questions about what is in any of those department budgets, I can dive into detail with you outside the meeting. This thing is freaking out. Okay, so, this has nine point, almost $9.5 million worth of capital showing in this line right here. And the capital I have broken out here, so that we could see the total of how much we're spending on, this is mostly projects and a little bit of, I think there might be a little bit of like really large equipment purchases, like at the wastewater treatment plant and that kind of thing.
I'm sorry, I have a question on that last one. So, these are the departmental requests or the equipment replacement numbers?
These are the department budget requests.
So, this is what was, that we talked about last week?
Yeah.
Like the narrative?
Yeah, these numbers are each of our departments, the total of our requests for each of our departments, except for if there was capital related to like the water fund, the water department, that would be down here in this line. So, it's basically, these up here are operating requests, but also the transfers that we would normally be sending to the equipment replacement are reflected in there.
So, how do these numbers, the 511 through 596, compare to what we were just looking at at the funds? Like, so, because I was thinking like, oh, does this 500 have to, are these subaccounts of the 500 equipment rental and replacement? These are not kind of, they're like separate, these are like the parent's account, and then these are like a subaccount of CE?
Yeah, a lot of these, most of these are in CE.
Got it.
So, legislative, court, executive, finance, legal, personnel, law enforcement, fire, detention, billing inspection, emergency services, those are all in CE. So, that top section's all in CE. Then, we get down to water utilities, which is in the water fund, wastewater is in the wastewater fund. Road stuff is in the street fund, and that's the bulk of it. These are pretty piddly little things down here, other than parks is in CE, too, and I can see that I need to identify which funds that they go into.
Yes. Mr. Sullivan?
So, just to be clear, since the total here matches the proposed expenditures, these would be the department requests after they've been adjusted to meet what we think we could budget? Because I think like law enforcement at least had a larger request that we had to shrink down.
Yeah, these have been pared down to a, what I would call somewhat reasonable level. You'll see in a minute, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done, but this is...
These aren't like, these aren't the...
This is taking out the pie in the sky request.
No, no.
Mr. Peterson?
So, the other day, there was a very engaged, lengthy discussion of the budget. These amounts are different from that date, or these...
No, these are the numbers that I gave you last week.
Okay.
By and large, I mean, there's some small adjustments here and there, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. These are the numbers we talked about.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have another question. What's the process when you get the, and maybe, okay, what's the process? So, we got those narratives, which were super, super helpful. Who decides yes or no? Is that...
So, basically, there is a meeting between Sarah, myself, and Harvey, and we just go through what we think we could reasonably swing in the initial round, and that's pretty much the numbers that you see before you.
We took pie in the sky and made it simply pie.
Oh, okay.
It's not...
Because the tour of this wins the day, slow but steady, incremental.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Peterson?
So, Mike, going forward, we had a conference, we discussed these, and I have an incredible amount of confidence in what you will come up with and the staff, I mean, and we were very close. So, what's, what's the future on these? Was that addressed right now in that conversation, or...
No, but that's...
So, okay, so, what's the next step?
I mean, the, the next step really with this gap is we'll be looking for efficiencies. See what we can trim. And then whatever gap is there, we'll be looking for it and engaging with city council. As far as if a revenue option is needed or do we trim more into the bone? But we are gonna do an initial shave. But as stated during the budget workshop, that, that's been a trend for a while now. So I'm just cautioning everyone, the ability to do a full shave compared to passives maybe isn't there as much. But we'll do what we can.
We think that, that there's going to be a mix of asking you to get some additional revenue. And then, and then taking a further look at what's, what we, what we believe is absolutely essential for, for public safety and for support for the community. And what we can postpone, we look at postponing major, larger equipment purchases. We try multiple times to do something, but I think it's gonna be a combination of all those, both revenue and.
And what I would also like city council to take a look at as well. Because it'll give you a good snapshot of the bigger ticket item purchases that are needed in the next couple of years. Is staff put together a very comprehensive capital improvement plan? That has equipment replacement and facilities on there. And has a lot of information, pictures, maps of where all the stuff is at. So, I'll get into that a little later on, but please take a look at that and let me know any questions or comments.
I know this is simply terminology and I don't think it is meant badly by it. But I would like to push back a little bit against the pie in the sky comments. I think what we initially got from our departments, as far as what I saw, was a reasonable budget. And what we're having to do is trim down to meet a very tight revenue situation. I don't think I saw anything that I would characterize as pie in the sky. In terms of, you know, it was unreasonable requests.
So I didn't think it was pejorative at all?
Yeah, well, and I just wanted to kinda clarify on that. Cause that to me has kinda the connotation of, well, it's way more than a reasonable person could expect. It's basically what we would like to be able to provide, I think.
There is no council retreat in Fiji.
Yeah.
Maybe next year.
That budget meeting, I, just so everyone understands, that was two and a half hours? Exhaustive? This was not something that. This was deeply thought through. I think that's shared. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that that was. There was good information, there was thoughtful discussion. Perhaps for the first year, I don't know. But it was, it was time well spent, well informed. And very, very much in detail discussed during that workshop. So I just, yeah, yeah. This is not, this is not a passing, quick summary. This was very, very thoughtful, so I appreciate it, Mike, thank you.
No, no problem. And we're trying to start a lather earlier this year as well, so we could have a very deep discussion. Thanks Sarah and staff for trying to get this done early.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Thank you.
You ready to move forward? I just wanna make sure everyone's good, okay. Alright, so I was gonna just briefly go down kind of a list of our major capital expenditures that are included in here. Of the 24.3 million of expenditures in our budget, about nine and a half million is capital. Which we saw on a previous slide, that bottom box on the department slide. Four and a half million of that is the well number one CCI, the Loop Line project. Two point seven is the well number two project. About one and a half million is the Fourth Street and Academy Way sidewalks and roadway project. And about 450,000 is wastewater upgrades at the treatment plant for next year. Some other capital projects that we have are, the chip seal program is in there. Some more stormwater facility planning is in there. Remodel the planning and public works side of city hall, there's an office in there that is unusable right now. So this is some money to make that a workable space and for some conference room space. Southside parking lot reconstruction, so the parking lot right out here that's crumbling is on the list for getting a facelift next year. And I would also install electrical services throughout the area, throughout the whole parking lot. So that we can do the farmer's market more easily and things like that.
And some greenery and trees as well, cause the farmer's market vendors have complained in the summer that it's getting a little too hot, so.
And then we have, the fire department needs, desperately needs a kitchen remodel. I think it's both that kitchens are being enhanced. And an upgraded HVAC system out there. And then engineering for the Lions Park dredging of the pond and rerouting the creek and that whole. Big project. Just the engineering portion. Okay, the big question is how are we gonna pay for all of that? So, I'm gonna kinda go through the current expense revenues, since that's our biggest fund where most of our activities happen. This is where general city services, so public safety, et cetera, are in current expense. Ninety percent of current expense is funded by taxes and permits. So, a huge portion of it. Property taxes, this year we're projecting about 1.8 million. I am budgeting for just slightly more, about $20,000 more next year. And that, that number includes the 1% that we're allowed to take. And also the new construction number that I have in a preliminary sense from the county is 7.2 million. That will change, I just have an early number right now, so. Okay. Our second largest revenue source is the retail sales tax. And this one, I just pretty much budgeted to be flat. That's really been what's going on for the last four, four or five years. So, this year we're projecting about 1.157 million. And I am budgeting 1.173 for next year. And a portion of that is this Marketplace Fairness Act. That is coming into effect for sales tax on internet sales. So, our little pieces of pie the first year is about 13,000. But after that, it escalates and it actually becomes an amount that we could maybe do something with, so. Utility tax is the third largest revenue source. And this one, I'm just, it's trending up. And I really liked it, this number, the 740,000, cause it just looked like, gosh, it's just, is that really what it's doing? And that is the trend that I'm seeing. So, I'm budgeting for 740,000 next year. I expect about 720 this year. Permitting revenues, really they've been pretty flat for the last four or five years. They've just kinda gone up and down just a little bit. So I'm budgeting conservatively, cause you just never know on permitting what's gonna happen. At 110,000, I might need to adjust that a little bit in, in a future rendition of the budget. But that's where I start, where I'm starting.
Can we go back to one more? Is it impossible to, when you graph this, to go from, well, and if you can't, that's fine. Can you go from, can you go from zero to 760?
Yeah, I can adjust this scale if that's.
No, and, yeah.
You mean adjust the scale over here?
Yeah. And the only, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I've used this in a prior life, okay. So, you know, 640 to 760, the difference between 720 and 740 looks dramatic. If this was put on a zero plane, it would look much flatter.
Yes, it would.
And, you know. And if, if we don't want to, that's.
No, in fact, one of the things that. When you look at things like this in public health, all of the scales should be exactly the same, except for the upper one. So that variations don't look as dramatic. So if you start all these scales, it's, you know, just to give you an idea.
It's minor, it's just.
I mean, it's gonna, what's, what's gonna show is that these are very small changes.
Yeah, yeah.
2016 to 2018, is that about a 10% increase? Is that my math about right?
I mentioned this, auto scales when you do this, you know, I understand, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, water utility charges. So 2016, we were at 881 for water sales. Projected in 2017 at 933. And for 2018, I'm budgeting just under 1.1 million. And the, you see the increase here because of the rate analysis that we did. And then implementing some increases so we can support our expenditures. So this is tracking right on, right on with that plan. And then the same thing you'll see down here, this is the debt reserve fund. This is where the portion of the user fees that is allocated for debt service gets deposited, is in this fund. So, just the same, same trend following what we talked about, what we've implemented as far as the rate structure. So, yeah, this year it's a 15% increase in the O N M, which is the operations side. And then 10% in the debt, debt service. Wastewater, this is similar in that you'll see an upward projection in the wastewater charges, the operating fund. But in this case, you'll see a decline in the debt service fund. And that's because we took some of the excess that we were accumulating through our charges in the, in the debt side. And we lowered that fee so that we didn't have to increase the, the operating one as much.
The increase in the water, okay, so, I'm sorry. Water, sewage, you know, the increase in the water, I should know this, I don't, I apologize. That increase occurred or will incur when?
January 1st is when, so we had one January 1st, 2017. And then the next one, that 15% on January 1st, 2018.
So we're looking at the rear, rearview mirror on the 2017 back in January, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So when I have people come and talk to me about their water rates going up. That's really, I mean, the first stage of that increase, of course, was back at the beginning in 2017, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I was trying to have this discussion with this individual, but, okay.
Yeah, it's, the, the rates that we, you guys adopted a year ago was for a three-year period?
Right.
So a three-year lookout and then probably next year we'll evaluate again and see if we need to do like a rolling change for the next three years or.
So we're almost a year into this first phase, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that was, those were pretty much the revenue sources that fund our, just our normal operations side of things. So now we'll talk about capital funding. So, we use a little bit of fund balance. We have rate funding that we've implemented now in the rate structure for both water and wastewater. So there will be a continual amount of rate money that's going into a fund for capital. We have, we're planning the 6.9 million to be funded between the DOH loan proceeds and then the revenue bonds that we're issuing this year. And then a million, almost a million three is funded by grants. So we've applied for this TIG, just over a million dollars. And then the transportation alternatives, I think is what TIG stands for? That one we have already, that's actually two grants together and we've already been awarded those. And these are all for the Fourth Street Academy Way project. And then we also have REIT 1 and REIT 2 coming in. And that is a typo, I am sorry, that should be 230,000, we missed that. So REIT 1 is paying for chip seal. And then REIT 2 is where we are doing the planning for the park, the Lions Park project. And so I, I foresee that project probably being funded by REIT 2 money in the future. Operating budget, so this is gonna be looking at revenues and expenditures that are just part of our regular operations. I haven't gone through these and filtered them to make sure they're all recurring or non-recurring. That will be part of my own analysis for the preliminary budget later on. But the, these are operating type revenues and expenditures. So our expected operating revenues is about 10.6 million. And the requested operating expenditures is about 11.2, 11.3. So, if that's all we were looking at as far as not having any fund balance or any other money to throw in the pot, we would be looking at a $680,000 loss on our operations next year. The way it sits right now with all of the requests and the revenue forecasts as they are now. So we have some work to do. We were actually in a really similar place at this time last year with last year's budget, so I'm not surprised by this.
As I recall, we had set a goal for what we wanted our operating fund balance reserves to be.
Yep.
And how far off from that goal is our projected 2018 ending fund balances?
I haven't had the chance to do that analysis yet, but I will have those answers for you at the preliminary budget presentation. Okay, and then summary, in total, all of our revenues are at about 20 million. All of the expenditures requested at about 24.3. So the net spend down for the city is about 4.3, 4.4 million. And that's it.
More questions for Ms. Gilmore?
Basically, we're, we're about five percent short on the budget, about six percent short on the budget. That's usually fairly easy to accomplish. Actually, we were very surprised and very hopeful that we'll be able to, through this, continue to keep our twenty percent per expense operating reserves and be able to fund the equipment, so those kinds of things in the long run. Keep this, keep this deep truck.
If there's no other questions, thank you, Ms. Gilmore. Mr. Rizal, hello, Mr. Crickett.
Hey, thank you, Mary. I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Crickett. We partnered with the Washington State University Rural Community Design Initiative that helped us with some design regulations to encourage a main street corridor type feel to allow jabbering. There were multiple workshops on this over the summer, and it's been through the process through the Planning Commission as well as the Economic Development Commission. And, yeah, the R C B I Rural Community Design Initiative, they do a lot of this work all over the state of Washington. And I worked extensively with Bob Lepes, because he's actually chaired the Store Preservation Commission back in Goldback. So, but that, that was yours.
So, what I, thank you for inviting us out to present this today. What we've done is, we did have a series of workshops. We started in January, came out and toured the city with Mike and discussed some of the issues with Mike and John and Harvey. We looked at what the whole scope could be, and what the concerns were to come in provide design guidelines for College Avenue that were indicated to be developed as part of the comprehensive plan. So our final product here, this is most of the pages from the book that we developed, a design guideline. So the comprehensive plan suggests that a portion of College Avenue be developed in a manner that creates a main street atmosphere, brings the light onto the street, and creates a walkable space, a space of a lot of energy. So going from this more suburban feel here on the left to pulling the buildings up closer to the back of the sidewalk, creating what's called a street wall, so it encourages taller building heights, greater density along College Avenue, to create that main street atmosphere. These guidelines are intended to not be so restrictive as to discourage development, but as we found in many cities that people didn't know what to do, if they had some guidance that helped them to provide what encourages this type of development in that field. And so there's very few things that are in this draft that are shells, or you must do this. And the point is, as we do it along there, building height setbacks, and then elements that are part of the building and storefronts. What this doesn't address is signage regulations, which I know we're working on those, and parking. Those are outside of the scope that we've done here. So this book is plaid up into an overview, the intent of the book focusing mainly on building design facets. I'll go into that, I'll go into those in more detail here. A little bit on streetscape design, you've done most of your streetscape already, and so this just discusses how to move forward with completing that. And then some, a little bit on public spaces. As we presented to, so we came out in January and scoped the project, we came back and for our first workshop, we had done research on case studies of towns that have similar design guidelines and similar intent of a main street character. A broad range of directions that this could take. And as we finished the first workshop, it was decided that what really needs to come out of this is a menu of options that people could choose and bring into their buildings. Not so restrictive that it turns people away, that encourages them to promote a certain type of character. Bring retail and office functions to the street, perhaps become residential above. Later, we presented this to the Royal University. And that meeting, there are a lot of concerns over what, we have to tear down all our existing buildings to follow these guidelines, and of course not. But if you remodel them, these guidelines would help you to bring this type of character in a renovation. So we took a photo of an old bungalow on the street north of here and stitched over how, in this instance, it could be turned into a restaurant. So bringing the clear glass here, more blazing, bringing that light out into the front yard, putting seating out in the front yard, trying to bring some embellishment to the front of the building, signage, et cetera. Bringing a driveway on the side with parking in the back, in this instance, because it's a very residential lot. So this was a concept sketch of how existing houses might be developed. And then we had a final workshop where we refined the guidelines one by one. And then I came out here in late mid-July and presented to the Planning Commission and incorporated comments on that meeting and how they're ready to bring to the council. The intent here is to shore up a basic definition to what was asked for in the comprehensive plan of urban design on, on College Avenue. And in that original plan, they had a concept sketch here, which I apologize for the quality of this. It's a conversion from one software to another. If you all have copies of it.
Yeah, it's really clear on here.
So this was a sketch that John Licker has in his office about how development could be brought to the back of the sidewalk and help to build this main street character. And that was in the comprehensive plan. The objectives are to create a small town atmosphere, setting for a slower pace of life. And then these are the standards that will help ensure that the buildings and storefronts are dominant features, not parking and signs. And then also, these allow for flexibility and innovation. They're not, we try not to be restrictive or to be, you must do this. This is what, in the comprehensive plan, it said, there was a plate of building owners and downtown association. People would put these together and we just may ask a couple of examples. So the area that we're talking about runs from Twelfth Street, Thirteenth Street, on up to Rose Street, along College Avenue. As we were developing this and looking at this, we saw it really broke up nicely into four approximately, quarter-mile segments that could be considered as districts, the downtown district where we are, South College Avenue, the university district, and North College Avenue. I think Mike has built that into a wayfinding plan that also helped develop. So the intent here for these lands and the streetscape, it's unified in lots of wide, variety, building forms, and massing. So it's to guide development, to create the old, to create that feel of downtown. So buildings that come up to the back of the sidewalk, we've asked for an additional five, six, ten foot setback on the buildings to give a wider sidewalk, so more activities can occur, but to help create that sense of a downtown. So storefronts, so they're increasing the setbacks. So are bringing up a greater setback so that you can have activities along the street, still have people guided by. Street trees mature, creating a shaded walkable space, but still visibility of the storefronts. Crucial to this is this concept of what are called street walls. And that is pulling the buildings up to, closer to the sidewalk, that downtown feel. There's plenty of suburban development around the way to College Avenue, so this is intended to create this, this main street downtown feel. Setting building heights, here with that twenty-five feet minimum, fifty foot maximum. This is one of those that we're, we still need to pin down. I've got an illustration, something that we can discuss on building heights. Creating some corners, what's called erosions, and so cutting away the corner of the building to create more sidewalk space there. And then limiting street buildings to commercial, detailed, professional offices, but no residential. Definitely encouraging the residential above, of course. Keeping the storefront design hidden for more detail, and storefront design details, that's the, having some standards for that to bring more texture, more level of detail, quality of materials to the pedestrian level, lighting, signage, and then breaking down the whole mass of the building so you don't get the big box feeling. And then limiting horizontal runs, so the horizontal runs of canopies and buildings are a little more articulated, more pedestrian scale. And then wrapping building corners, so the building doesn't just run College Avenue, but when the building turns a corner, you wrap the corner. So in the building height, we've been looking at minimum canopy height, so there's ten, this is a ten-foot clear canopy. This is a twenty-foot building height, and we've suggested in this draft with the standards, a twenty-five foot minimum height, which comes in about here. So this allows for a generous first-floor ceiling height for retail, a planned space for air conditioning ductwork, et cetera, and then a column pair that just screen the canopy. For twenty-five foot, I think it would be, you could lower it to twenty-two, if you thought that was too high. And this twenty-two, twenty-five foot being for a minimum building height. Now, if they set a maximum, and this was out of the comprehensive plan, it was only a limit of fifty feet. So you can see here that fifty feet can get you a three-story building. It could fall first floor and then generous second and third floors. A column pair that I just screen the canopy, but if you set it a maximum.
So, and you ever would join in? Mike and others, this for downtown, obviously. So this is what we've been, I mean, how do I, how do I characterize this? This is something we've kind of been talking about for quite some time, obviously. So we've discussed parking, which, with the renovation of downtown. But this is kind of where we're headed at with downtown. I mean, there's been a lot of discussions, obviously, about what we're gonna do with downtown, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And, and the thing is, in PS comprehensive plans, there were a lot of sketches and ambiguous goals and so forth, but nothing really to go into, how do you implement it, or how do you get there?
I agree too.
Yeah, and this is basically a conduit to help get.
And I, you know, I'll go on the record, I like this. This, this is something that kind of addresses the parking issue that we, we have right now, right?
Partially, that's gonna be addressed as we get deeper into a comprehensive plan, because that affects several elements in there, such as land use, the commune houses, it's all intertwined. And parking is an issue that affects all of that.
And with the renovation of this College Avenue, much of what we're seeing right now was some of the thoughts or processes of what we thought this was gonna look like eventually down the road, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is a way of taking what was a pretty nebulous vision.
Yeah.
And, and not making it set in stone.
Yeah.
But rather giving some ideas on as, as further development, it's a very, very way. How, how do we influence that so we achieve that look of a downtown?
So this isn't necessarily a project where we come in with all kinds of money that we procure from some place and just do this, this is just something that develops over time.
So it's, for, for instance, if there's, there's a corner, there's an empty lot at the corner of Eighth and College. And whoever comes in there, we would encourage them to, to, to build something that incorporates these materials as it goes forward. Some of it's already exist, you know, we have, well, it's not quite like this. Right across the street, we've got apartment complexes and businesses out front. We like to continue to see that first-floor business kind of approach. And then if they wanna build a multi-story building, they can put living space above those.
And this has been zoned that way, currently, from there to there.
Yeah, that whole corridor that was on the map for a few years, so.
Okay.
So kind of one thought I have, and it's kind of parking language, I know it's kind of outside the scope, but if we were gonna be thinking like really forward here, you know, there's, I think, some suggested like widths between, for sidewalks, like something like between eight and twelve feet or something like that. And I was thinking like, one of the things with College Avenue is that we didn't narrow it, and we didn't want to do any like property acquisitions, because that would just start everything out of that. But if we were really like fifty, hundred years down the line, kind of thinking, we would have, if we wanted a wider street, you know, a century from now, we would be having quite an additional amount of sidewalk space kind of suggested in there. So just kind of an idea, I was thinking of like, put a lot of extra buffer there for not only encouraging, you know, kind of street, sidewalk activities, but also because, say, fifty years down the road, when maybe this, our corridor needs some revamping, it'd be much easier to do like an acquisition to widen the street a little bit, or do something with extra parking around it, just something to throw out there.
And Michael, to your point, you know, and I'm not sure, maybe perhaps I'm going in the wrong direction, but when I look at what we've done with College Avenue, with the narrower streets, this actually fits that design, am I right?
Well, yeah, this is, you know, this is to encourage like a walkable downtown corridor that's a live-work space.
So many of us could think that we wish that the streets were wider, sidewalks were narrower.
I want white sidewalks and a white street.
You know, yeah. After this construction, but this actually fits into what we have and what we're going with, perhaps.
I, I would agree with that, and as far as dealing with like extra traffic in the future, at least in my opinion, I'd push back a little bit about thinking going wider beyond the current right-of-way in the sidewalks, because we do have additional north-south streets could be improved upon, for instance. So like Davis Street, Dates, Date, some of the other ones. So there are other avenues to look at in the future as far as traffic mitigation. But to really encourage like a college town, live-work spaces can do so they have the buildings closer together, sidewalks, narrower streets, because otherwise pedestrians get very nervous if it's a football field wide.
Because, Michael, when we look back a year ago, some of the zoning here was for that. It was for business at the ground level, up to the main street, and housing above.
Yeah, it's mixed.
Right? Because people could afford to have a business and live.
Yeah.
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 Thank you, thank you.
Look, thank you for your comments. It does, it really. So it does, it really changes the character of the street when you've got life above the second, third floors. There's a semantic pullback between a dark upstairs and something that's going to live in it increases some of the paint power of the street. This is a reference to the architectural buildings of the street, going to the university, the cross school campus. The top of that is in a 22 foot range, so about this high. So I think a minimum 25 foot isn't excessive, and if they're adjusted by a third or two, maybe that would draw another ductus out of it. We've discussed colors and materials, we strongly suggest, you know, using colors, pulling from the surrounding environment, the natural colors, avoiding certain intense colors. Some, we've got a range of colors in here that should be avoided. And sometimes these colors will date a building and other times it's a bit too bright. Again, it's not, you shall not get it avoided. Talking about bringing accents of color in. And then looking at materials that at the street level are durable and of higher quality. If you wanted to change, you know, above the pedestrian level, you could go to, say from a concrete or a stone or a tile to synthetic plaster or something like that that is more avoidant. You know, no vinyl siding, metal siding at the pedestrian level, providing a durable base to the building, show that much detail here. And then many groups that are exposed to the street of a, of quality material are So this clearly defines those street level elements. We put them into a sketch here that's annotated, and I'll pull this up in the next slide. Here we talked about taller ceiling heights on the first floor, 12 feet, street facing, glazing to be 80% transparent. The question came up in the client commission was how you keep people from putting window coverings on there that will block this transparency. The intent here is to bring the retail offices that are at the street level, to bring that into the street and the street into the store, so that they are part of each other. When you close off the ground level, storefront just kills the life there. There's seen plenty of examples of that. And so keeping this transparency, limiting the types of window treatments will help make sure that the light in the store comes into the sidewalk and street. And then weather protection, awnings, sun. A awning is a sloped surface, a canopy is a flat surface, and just durable materials, no shiny plastics, you know, or canvas or metal materials. So there's a level of quality to the materials at the street level. Encouraging, and then John wanted to make sure that we, you know, nothing projects, anything that gets into the right of way is renewable and covered the right of way. Protection for pedestrians and also weather protection for storefronts and sun protection for certain types of the day. So here we'll blow up with that. So this helps people take what's written and understand it and adapt it from that. We're going to discuss the size of it's a more pedestrian scale, as you can, these street furnishings. This is what we mean by erosion of the corners to step the building in so that if you've got four buildings that were all over that, it gives more of a presence to the intersection, allows more gatherings to occur here, creates a presence for the street here. Here's where, working with John through the workshops, we came up with four required elements in a storefront. So this is the only things that you must do. So it's minimum lengthified, durable kick plates, so along the base of the building there, sense of a base, a kick plate. This plank based concrete cabinet. So if you've got windows, you've got what's called a kick plate. If it's a column or something, it's a, a column base, more durable material, concrete or stone. Pedestrian scaled lighting, so smaller fixtures down at the pedestrian level. And then pedestrian scaled signs, signs painted on the building. So here, this would be considered a desperate scaled sign. So tend to be viewed in a slower pace. It's not a large sign that you can have to do from high speed from a long distance. And then, or on the back of that. Okay. So those were the four required elements in every storefront. And then, and the signage would be, you know, the signage or anything here. And then two additional items is what would be required. So, so it says you shall include all four of these required plus two additional. So projecting silos on the storefront, display windows or artwork, pilot stairs with family ductors. So the pilot stair, which is the element here on the building, the structural column that runs up to the floors. So something that breaks up the mass of that pilot stair, or a, or amount of tile work or metal work. So again, bringing a higher level of detail to the pedestrian area, machinery treatments, especially the gatherings. And so you find a lot of those on more traditional buildings, but they've also worked their way into more newer buildings as well. Now, we were planting, hanging baskets. But the intent here is that we just bring a higher level of detail and then to the
Mike, what, what? What can a city do to encourage? I know there's restrictions and I, that's all I, all I, you know, I've heard over the years, we can't help this, we can't do that, we can't do this. What can a city do to help with this development downtown? What are your thoughts on that?
There's a couple of things that we're looking at. One, one that I'm not going to get into because it's pretty complex, but we're exploring it is this multifamily tax exemption program, which encourages like mixed-use construction in downtown corridors, and it's through Department of Commerce. Another one, which I actually just talked with today, is Department of Commerce is actually making a concerted effort to try to invest in Main Street rural communities. And they actually want to look at funding a pilot program very similar to that grant application I wrote a while ago for the business stabilization, except it would be a direct program from Department of Commerce partnering with banks. I've, I've talked to Department of Commerce to try and get on their list for a pilot for that. So that's, that's really what we need to do. Beyond that, compared to a lot of other states, things above that are very limited here, because this state is the only one in the country that doesn't constitutionally allow tax increment finance and urban renewal. And it's a very common tool across the country. And that's something that Olympian, maybe we're lobbyists, we should explore, because if you, if you have enough lobbyists, you can get it passed for your own city like a TIF light, but yet it doesn't exist across the state.
So if I come to you and I want to open a coffee shop, and I want to do construction like what we've seen here, and I want to open up some sort of a, I don't know, let, you know, pick what you want to do as far as, you know, clothing or breakfast, you know, whatever. So I'm going to have to find asset on my own, more or less, as far as construction out to these?
There are some, there are some lower cost grant in loans through the Small Business Development Center, which I've advised people to contact. And then there's also local banks where because of the amount of deposits, they're really trying to get loans out the door. Banner Bank's a good example of that. So I've been working with them to try to get like a lower rate loans for storefront improvements for businesses. So it goes along those lines, but as far as like outright grant program or a city given money toward that, you can't with current expense money if you have the luxury of having extra current expense money. But as far as tax increment, finance or urban renewal, which most cities outside this state have, we can't do something like that.
But there are things on the edges, I mean, potentially.
Yeah, yeah. There are, there is help as far as lower cost loans or some action grants. Anyone who I've been in contact with who's needed assistance, and there is quite a few, I directed them to those appropriate channels.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thanks.
But you can see also where this building here, Pullman was a speculative, where they developed it and they found tenants to retail on the first floor and there are three stories of office. So. So we discussed massing and articulation. So basically the intent here is to break up the mass of the building facade so that it isn't one large big box. And again, bringing human scale to the facade. You can step back in building heights, you can move the building back and forth. This is a greater than five foot distance, but we respond to five foot, step back, and then encourage the 10 foot. So you could move your facade in and out more than five foot dimension, which would bring a level of articulation and break the masses of massing. These are, these illustrations are showing how those treatments can be applied to a building facade, so the canopies, the glazing has broken up the structural elements, the columns here, really molding underneath the windows, a lot of pair of bearing, the pair of shapes. So this gave people an illustration of what this means. So those are the building elements. We have a lot of flag lots here and a lot of, and so if there were needs to get back or if people wanted to develop a, there's a break in things, there's, there's suggestions here about not leaving it as an empty space to develop it as a way to go between college avenue and the streets behind, if it was part of one of those streets that there, you know, access to the flag lots. Here, Ruston's taken up a lot that our building used to be converted into a park. And then the forelenses here, they've got a fountain there, so they've really taken one that was, could have turned into a guter after they made it an asset. You can do that on smaller sales here, so they've embellished this halfway between two buildings to the rear of the lots. So this is suggesting that these not be left unfinished. Blank walls and so we've required that if a building turns the corner on the street, that the building design turns the corner too. If it's, you've got an existing building or the blank wall, it's suggesting treatments of murals, if it's a new building, architectural treatments, if it's to be, if you finish your building and there's the next one, building next to it on an interior lot, I don't think we're going yet, it's saying you don't need it unfinished when you provide murals or some other treatment to it, so it's not just a large blank wall. And so here's a, you know, just what you can do with a small space of the Rogers Bay for this, because it's embellishing a, or was a blank wall, turning the corner, the facade, it's already started. And suggestions for street art, you've already got your trees and plantings, so it's saying that the existing trees should be protected. And also discuss the possibility of what's called a percent for the arts program, where you either require or encourage developers to put aside 1% of their building budget and contribute it to your fine arts commission or your arts commission, and then they will be in charge of selecting what's called a private art. And Ruston is another usual example, it's a pretty robust program, a lot of variety to their work. Street furnishings, it's one of those things that really would fall to the city. And so it's saying that there's a lot of potential here for what you do with that. And to make it, you know, to be consistent in that it's very artful, like these pieces of concrete. And you could go out and you could buy it all from one source, it's pretty, pretty made, but it also makes a great opportunity for artistic collaborations for the design and construction. And so there may be opportunities within the community. This down here is a collaboration that students at Fine Arts School of Design and Construction, and a couple of other colleges, Washington State University, came together with the city of Pullman to design bus stops. And so, you know, there's a range of ideas here. So there's a lot of opportunities involving schools and the community. And there's a blow up of those ideas for bus stops. And that is the book, the document. This is taken at the end of our first workshop here.
Questions, Mr. President? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Thank you.
Yeah. Mike, we're going to, we're going to be incorporating these kind of guidelines over to our comprehensive.
Yep.
That's the goal, is to, is to build this into the comprehensive and it goes forward. So we've got a longer term view of where we go with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action items. 501, Agenda Bill 17207, City Electronic Board.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of the item that was presented in administrative reports of last May. I talked with the company who is selling that sign and looking at the software that is behind it. We have a webinar where I got to see it perform. The software looked very straightforward, so I was pretty satisfied with it. And you can run text. It has a dimming switch in the software program itself. You can shut off the sign through the software program. Really, the premise behind the sign is a lot of folks want to know the events that are going on in the community. We've greatly improved our efforts through website and social media and newsletter, but there still is an element of the population, we're getting a lot of complaints. running, getting a lot of complaints like get a reader board or a sign or something. As well as there's been complaints just that the existing sign has wrong locations and divisions. And then the other sign has maintenance issues, to say the least. And we just don't have the appropriate staffing to be switching out messages as often as we would like. Money for this would come from the fact that since we were able to get lower cost away finding signage and the gateway signage was low too. We're still within the allocation for away finding signage in the cars budget. So this is leftover money within that. I did some drive bys with my bicycle and my vehicle and it didn't look like it was blocking off too much. I did several tests. So I believe we're okay. We're trying to preserve that brick sign area. Because it looks nice, it says it needs something different in the middle.
Mr. Peterson?
I recommend an action motion draw through the City Administrator to contract with Stewart Signs for a 10mm reader board.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
I wanted to see an illustration of that pixel reading. One of the details that shows a taller sign.
So. So the pixel through the 10mm, if you go into Stewart Signs email document and go to page four, there is an illustration within there of the 10 versus the 12.
Yeah, 36 by 12.
So scroll down all the. And this is from the distance of essentially 50 feet at various pitches. Yep.
Something you have to make the fonts big to look crisp and you don't have enough room to fit the information in there.
I'm concerned now. The 10mm is high quality.
Yeah.
Okay, you can get 16, 18, even 22 millimeter. And the price goes down. We wanted something that was good for blocking. And those more inexpensive alternatives are only good for the long distance. And you approach them closely, it's very great.
Yeah, the other millimeters are very blurry. With another sign company, they actually brought examples on the back of the truck. And Larry and I were looking through it and that was where we made the determination what would be the better option. That was done a while ago before this RFP, but nevertheless, we saw an example of it.
Standard PDF, double dotted markers here. Shows a two foot, two inch, five foot, three inch opening or sound effect thing.
Yeah, yeah, that as far as, as far as that sign opening, that was measured, pictures were sent to that contractor. That was included in the RFP. They won't have everyone.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, well, this illustration which shows a 96, I don't want 60 displayed. That to me is definitely coarse. That's also from a very pixel-y, I guess is the term I'm using.
I mean, with the example Larry and I saw in the parking lot, it looked queer.
I guess I said last meeting that I just was never a big fan of these things. Just because I felt like we really have a very small town feel. But it seems like I'm in the vast minority here. But I just thought I voiced my opinion.
We definitely appreciate that. It just comes down to the ability of changing the messages as well as the staffing to do that. Because it's been a challenge. Even though the one side of the sign is blocked by the tree, I was talking with Paul about that. And if we start hacking off limbs, it's going to compromise and not really the tree. So there's just a lot of inputs and outputs to this situation.
What was the cost difference between different signs you got to see?
It was about $2,000 cost difference between the 16mm versus the 10. The 10 was the queerer option. And since the money is left over and the other option, you could definitely see the difference. $2,000 seemed to be a small enough where we should probably go for the better option.
So the electronic sign would go right out here, right on the street? And what happened with this taller sign? That's malfunctioning.
That would basically be surplus for scrap, pretty much.
So just be removed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we have electrical issues on it and the face of it's cracked. There's several issues that drive in pass it. You don't really see, but it's an issue.
About 10 millimeters, that is one pixel per pixel. What do you do with that?
What, there? I'm sorry?
What was that?
When it says 10 millimeter, that's the pixel size, right?
Yeah.
That's basically a cylinder, right?
Yeah.
There's one pixel there and we're going to.
In the range of the signs, that is the finer. In other words, if you're thinking about a display, yeah, that's terrible. But in terms of outdoor signs, that is the premium mark in today's technology. Most of them either run that as a single color or as a tri-color. And these that we're looking at is a tri-color. While 10mm sounds huge to us when we think of a computer display or a television, for outdoor signs, that is the smallest pixel size that is currently marketed. I can't tell you what could happen in three or five years. The state of the art could change dramatically. But right now, that is the state of the art.
See an example of it.
Mr.?
Um, speaking of examples, do we know what the one of the church and Andy's are?
No.
The church is 48 by 96. It is so coarse, it's hard to get a lot of information on it. We don't pay for the.
To me, it looks like it's a lot bigger than 10.
I suspect that they are, simply because 10 is still relatively new. 16 and 20 were more common when, like when Andy's sign. I'm not sure about the deck and mature sign. And how fine of a pixelation.
It's a monochrome. It actually uses individual LEDs that are maybe six millimeters. But it is probably not so, probably about 12 millimeters. A pixel, but it does some shading tricks to try and blend it.
Some interpolation.
Yeah. It looks pixelated from the screen.
Mike, this sign is standard for what would be a sign.
Yeah.
What's silly to communicate to its citizens?
Yeah, yeah, it's used to communicate to citizens a while ago. We had a sign truck come when Signorama was in business. And they showed us a comparison, basically. And with this 10mm test, it was crisp, it was clear as far as references. When RFPs have gave several cities, I call them, work for them. So therefore, I figure that we're more here.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Questions? Seaton, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hold sign.
Aye.
Motion to pass this.
What? Three to two?
Three to two.
Oh, stop, it was three to three.
Motion passes.
We were, yeah, I was in favor.
Well, we need a form for it to pass that way.
Well, we have one.
It's three, two passes. No, I thought a, the minimum. Like if you had like four people here, you wouldn't need three to pass it. Am I correct?
I'd have to check out the bylaws, but I believe we have a form. We have a majority of council members present.
We have a form first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some jury.
Well, there was, last year, we had an annexation that failed because it didn't get a full form.
We have a form of four and three, four and one against.
That's Growth Management Act.
Yeah, I think that might be.
That's GMA, Growth Management Act.
So that's a bit under the thousand.
Nayvolt for the Selby, the Sherman.
Lauren.
Peterson, Nayvolt, Mr. Bobbitt. We will ensure that that's appropriate for the new motion passes.
Thank you.
Public art code.
Uh, this was presented in administrative reports the last council meeting. And this code, you get extra points essentially when you want to file it for the National Endowment of the Arts Award Town Grant and other public art grants. And it just basically sets a framework by which public art is governed, basically just in public right of ways. So if there's bigger art installations, naturally it has to be stamped by an engineer. So that way, if there's an issue with it, we're sure it's structurally competent and it doesn't fall over. And this has a process basically for documenting the work of art and permitting. And then also just the fact that a public art plan, like where would be good to put art, that we should be working toward that, which Park and Recreation Board will assist with. And then also the process of deaccession in the works of art. This code borrowed from the City of Longview. This went through review, review process by the Park Arbor and Recreation Board the past couple of months. And that is what you see before you.
Questions, please, Mr. President?
What's driving this, in your opinion?
I mean, as far as what's driving this, just orderly placement of public art and basically guidelines in which to do that. And then when you're pursuing grants such as through National Endowment of the Arts, that is one of the criteria. Do you have a governing policy, basically, which suggests placement of said art?
So, yeah. Grand Junction, Colorado, there's interesting cities that will have. Is this to control somewhat? So there isn't something every three feet, right?
Yeah.
Or what it is?
It's basically to allow for orderly placement of public art just so it isn't just one town placed all over place. And then should the art be damaged, for instance, or the artist wants to back or loaned it for a respective period, that process is set forth in here. So it's just a very opaque guidelines.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Sherman? I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-038 to add chapter 12.28, Public Art, to the City of College Place Municipal Code.
Second.
It's approved by Mr. Sherman. Seconded by Mr. Peterson.
Or at least loud is loud.
You gotta be loud in the first.
Is there any further discussion?
We give the next one.
I'm sorry. Seaton, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand some. This motion passes unanimously. Hearing examiner, I assume, appear to regard replacement unit.
Yep.
The RRU.
So in this case, the hearing examiner that we used for many years, Sharon Rice, she submitted her resignation to both the All Wall County as well as the City of College Place because she had additional activities with her practice going on and talking with the county. We thought it'd be best to still have the identical hearing examiner just for continuity. So there was a RFP process which occurred. The first go around, no one applied. The second go around, there was the applications, went through a good process. Gary McLean, he was chosen by the county. We've had representation on the RFP Review Committee. And it is therefore, as you see attached to this, that's recommended that we go with Mr. McLean. He has our hearing examiner.
Questions, Mr. President? Seaton, is there a motion?
All motion to approve the contractor hearing examiner services with Gary and McLean hearing examiner.
It's approved. It's approved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, stand some. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Peterson, tell Ms. Kipper capital improvement.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go over this briefly. Because really, look over the document to see a full explanation of the projects. What we're trying to do, the series created booklet in which you could see really the equipment replacement, facility replacement, all the projects out for the next six years, which you need to happen. It's really like a wish list, though. When you create one of these, it isn't completely set in stone once it's adopted, but it helps when you're going after grants and other funding opportunities. So this booklet has a summary of all the capital facility and equipment replacement projects. And then when you go further into the booklet for each project, there's a project sheet that has a description, summary, where the money's coming from, what year a picture of it, as well as a map if there's a geographic reference. And then the bottom of the section has if any of the money is proposed to be spent in fiscal year 2018. So yeah, we're just really trying to proactively plan for our equipment replacement and capital facilities and get the word out to the public to review and give us comments or other suggestions. So please take a look at this. As you can see, it's a substantial amount of money. I mean, if we were to fully fund all of this in the next six years, the price tag is a little over 60 million. Big drivers behind that is naturally the well replacements. Our part of that, the bigger one, is the wastewater treatment plant because our permit needs to be renewed. And we're working through Public Works Committee and then tag teaming while other cities facing the same thing and see what we can do to get a cost effective solution. But a big portion of that's the whole wastewater facility treatment plant issue.
Sure.
You guys put a ton of work into this. It's awesome. Thank you for doing that. Is this kind of a roadmap that's going to help this process where we have the narratives? Like these are things that now, these are part of the replacement plan that are on the budget, that are in this little book, that going forward, they're not going to have to necessarily request some of these things. It's just going to be kind of in the rolling plan? Or requested if it's not, I guess, if it's something different or outside of?
I mean, really, the whole point of this is really so there are no surprises going forward.
Right.
going forward, so there is a roadmap.
But, yeah, I mean, there's, there's some duplication, or like a larger plan here of putting those together. This is awesome.
Yeah, and, and it's really to show that, in fact, if there is a gap in the revenue, and we need to figure out things, that this is going to help show that it's a longer term issue than, let's say, a one-year bullet. Uh, so that's really what we're trying to get toward, to do predictive of this with our financing.
My experience with, with these types of documents is, things that get included in this tend to get funded in the long run. There's always, there's always a focus in your mind about.
There's a goal.
Yeah, there's a goal here, and we need to do that. And this is a plan, the last, the last plan that was stumped out was happened a very long time ago, and, and so this will be changing all the time.
And this also helps if there's leftover funding by the state agencies, because we compiled a similar document in Colfax, and there were some cities in Woodland County who weren't able to really achieve what they were pursuing money from Department of Transportation for. And because we have a document like this, we actually got a call from them and said, hey, are you still wanting to do this? And we ended up getting allocation directly from the Department of Transportation. So it does help if there is some leftover funds and we can just go for it, so.
And especially when it's things like, oh, we didn't do the capital permit, really the capital budget last year, so now we've got to hurry up, or several dollars are going to be stimulus. It's always, oh, we need stuff that's ready to go now. So when we already have it laid out, that makes it a whole lot more likely we'll hit the money.
Yep.
All the comments or questions for Mr. Sherman? Thank you, Mike. Chief Porter. Ambulances.
I'm going to sit down. I had a four hundred page art presentation that was going to be read, but I forgot it.
And read three weeks in?
Yes.
Twenty lines per day.
Yes. In small firsts. So we're, we're going to use abbreviated version, because I don't know if you're worn down or I am, but it's been a long reading already. I provided for you in your, in your packets, some information that I, that we have gathered, thank you, uh, over the ambulance issue. As you know, we have been talking with the city of Walwalah for some time about where are we going and what is the direction in providing EMS transportation in our valley. They are to the point where they are, um, looking for alternatives as far as them being the sole provider, the sole transport agency in our valley. They are overworked. They, if, if they took away all the calls outside of their community, which last year was about fifteen hundred, they would still be running more calls than they were in 2007, including those. So they, they are, they are increasing calls within their own community, as, as well as outside of their community. And so they are concerned, both from a financial standpoint and from a burning out their, their personnel. Their personnel are giving resistance back, where they, they don't want to do a lot of overtime, uh, because they have such, uh, increase in workload. So over the last few years, we have been looking at alternatives to hopefully not increase a financial burden to our community by them saying, if, if we're going to continue this, there's going to be dollars associated with that. And so we've had those discussions, both Mike and I have had those discussions. Uh, and in that process, we, we determined we did not have a transport license, and we were not able to do any transports. If push came to shove, we would just be stuck, and, and we would have to pay a bill, because we didn't have that opportunity. Since then, we have achieved that license. As you can see in your packet, we provided you a copy of that license. And so today, we could transport somebody if we needed to, if there wasn't a need that arose. We don't have. When you achieve that license, when? August, I think the date is on it, August thirtieth. Okay. And both the mayor and, and Mike came and helped with the audit that the state came down, and they, they asked a lot of good questions, and they reviewed our vehicles and made sure we were ready from that day to be able to transport.
I would, I would add something to that, maybe accept something, the function, actually, the gentleman came from, from the State Department of Health, he said, he said, this was very simple, for, we're ready, we had everything that we needed, we went through suggestions, but it was a very short visit. Very impressive, the quality, the ambulance and the quality of the mountain, and the plan to go out there.
It looks like you have another question.
No.
Okay.
About this moment.
I, I will wait for it. And so we went through that process, and, and like I said, we are ready to transport. We do not have, uh, a burning desire to go out and transport at this time, because there's a lot of things that still need to go in, in place, and it is going to increase the workload of volunteers and paid staff to, to go down this road into this venture. We don't have billing in place, we don't have a lot of things in place. There's a document in your packet there that says preparing for ambulance billing on it, and it lists out the different steps that need to occur before you are, um, ready to be billing. And I've had some conversations with the billing company that actually put this document together, and they said, if we decided to begin the process today of seeking a Medicaid license, um, what we do is, we give, they'll mail us a packet, and we fill out that packet, we give it back to them, they submit it. Once that is submitted, let's say they submitted that on November first, no matter how long it takes them to approve that packet from the federal government, we can back bill all the way to November first. So we're not, we're able to start as soon as we turn that packet in. So that, that is a, a nice thing, that, you know, you don't start the process and wait a year and a half. Sometimes the federal government is a little slower than we would like. So that, that is a positive. We also talked about, how do we set up a budget? When we talked last, we really talked at the, the hundred thousand foot level, um, and, and they said, well, let's use District Four, which is the fire department that surrounds us, as a comparable. And they said today that they are currently collecting, on average, about three hundred and fifty dollars a call. So we know that about sixty percent of what we do would be BLS transports, and the rest would go either ALS or not transported at all. Last year, we did nine hundred calls, so we could extrapolate, five hundred and forty calls is about sixty percent of nine hundred, times that by three hundred and fifty, and that would give us what revenue, very, um, broad revenue would be gained by transporting and billing, if we build at the same rate that Fire District Four. Now, I, I would say that's probably a wise direction to go, to not be in competition with everybody around us, but to be, you know, similar to what they, they've built. So that is where we are on that today. I had a conversation yesterday with the city of Walwalah, uh, and they had some discussions, and they are not ready to give us a bill, um, at this time for 2018. They are, they are thinking they're not going to be ready to implement starting to charge us for services until 2020, when the new EMS levy is voted on again. So that's giving us some time to adjust and get ready for that, and negotiate, and figure out what we're going to do. They would like us to start transporting, however, to help relieve the, the burden that they are feeling, uh, from overuse of the system. I'm happy to entertain some questions. Or you're worn down enough and you want to go home.
You know, five hundred and forty, so we're talking about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of net, two hundred thousand, figuring?
Yes.
Of cat, of net?
Yes.
On billing. So, so the city of Walwalah is so busy, so busy, excuse me, that they're willing to forego that, that amount, correct?
Yes.
So they would not, if we transitioned, they would not bill us for any of that, correct?
They would not bill us for those calls, correct? They?
So they would suddenly be not as busy?
Correct.
I think, I think it's important to find out, the, the Walwalah Fire Department, all paid employees. And if I recollect, the highest paid employee in Walwalah is on fire.
I don't know if that is, I don't know if that's up to date, but in the past, yes.
In the past, it has been.
Because of overtime.
There's a, there's a considerable cost to the operation of the fire department.
We have one ambulance?
We have one vehicle that can transport.
Could that handle it?
No.
Would you have to buy? Well, no, the option is to go through.
There's lots of options. If we are to do our own, we would have to have a, a backup unit for when it got oil changes and those types of things, yes.
And there's other issues, right, with the separate company still, is that? Do you have a, a different agency head or ambulance?
You could contract out to a private entity, yes.
So for a hundred and nine, you're talking about three FDS potentially, two?
I'm not talking about anything at the moment.
No, no, I'm saying, but for two hundred thousand, you're talking about two to three people that you could hire full time to do ambulance service, potentially.
Potentially.
Okay. And so, where are we at?
What do you mean by where are we at?
Well, we're not going to, they want to bill us for, if we do nothing, what happens?
Life goes on the way it currently is.
But they will send us a bill.
Not until 2020.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Okay. If you do something tomorrow, um, good.
Uh, and I would add, within the budget right now, we have somebody decided to do a utility study, just what essentially we would have to charge per call, and does this actually pencil out? That would be in the budget for next year, it's in there now, so.
So, in some of these meetings, would, would, if you had additional staff for ambulance service, would this cross over to your fire at all? Augmenting your fire suppression staff?
Yes. Currently, I have twenty-three EMTs of the thirty-three people we have. We are dual function.
So if you had three that were like paid employees, that would, that would help you?
Yes.
And their roles?
Thank you.
So Walwalah doesn't charge us currently because of this EMS levy that exists, that's expiring in 2020?
No.
What's the connection then? So we're not being charged right now, but?
We're not being charged now. Originally, they, they received enough revenue from what they charged?
Yeah.
To keep it going. Twelve, what, twelve, sixteen, eighteen years ago, we started an EMS levy, um, to help stay in the black for all the agencies everywhere. They would still charge us even if the EMS levy continues at the rate, because they're no longer staying in the black. So, it just, it, it's just how the timing is, is coming out, that 2020 happens to be the new EMS levy, and, and when they think they're going to start. And I don't know if that means they're going to pull back to just do their city, and if they want to come out, there's going to be a contract, that, that I'm guessing is, is what they're alluding to.
The other piece, the unknown piece of this is they're the only advanced life support provider in the county.
Uh, city of Burbank is now, but.
At least in the valley, right, this part. So with that, they're obligated to provide the services for?
Per, per the EMS levy, yes. And for trauma that by state, they have to do that.
Well, let's back up there a bit. So, College Place residents are paying a tax to support that, support it right now? Hey, Dan?
What was that?
Yes and no.
The EMS.
So, so the EMS levy is fifty cents per thousand that all property owners countywide pay into. Currently, the city of College, the way the formula works, the city of College Place actually gets more money back than we pay into. So no, we're not paying into that. Last year, we got about seventy thousand dollars more than was collected in the community, because it's based upon call volume, assessed evaluation, and population. I don't make the formula.
No, but you could make the argument, there are certain areas of Walwalah that would be the same.
City of Walwalah.
I mean, what I'm saying is, there could be areas of Walwalah that use the resources more than what they pay in.
City of Walwalah gets more resources than they pay in.
Right, yeah.
The, the fire districts pay more in than they get.
That's interesting, thank you.
So, I, I'm hoping you're going to digest this, and I, and I know there's a lot of information before I got a chance to talk to you. I don't want us to rush into anything. It's never been a career goal for us to start an ambulance service in College Place, because it, it comes with a headache, billing and, and all that, and I don't think we can, I don't think we could support it long term with our current staffing and paying model. I do, however, believe that we are probably to a point where, whether I like it or not, us as a community need to take care of our own a little bit, and currently, we're not doing that. We order the call, and, and we take vitals, and we do a good job, and our volunteers do a good job, we just need to go the next step now and, and, and finish the process. I think it's, I think it's the right thing as a neighbor to do, I think it's the right thing as a community to do. Now, whether it pencils out and we can do it, I don't know.
And as Mike noted, we'll be doing our weight study to take a look at the volume. On the face of it, it would appear that it would, would give enough income to generate interest in whatsoever. Whether that's true or not, it was some really interesting spreadsheets, and again, the average return for calls is three fifty, Fire District Four, that may or may not pencil out for us here.
Correct. And, and we, as the fire agency, don't see this as a windfall, we're hoping to break even.
That's kind of my thinking too, that we, the community should be taking care of their own, like you said, you know, and putting things in place, you know, if you could sample, see what we can do, stay in the black, you know, bring in the community, support the community, just be, kind of, you know.
If we had a robust system, would we, would we be a backup for Walwalah in certain scenarios?
So, I think the system, I, I've talked with the other chiefs, and I think the system is, is that we need to be good mutually partners.
Yeah.
And if someone needed us wherever, we would go, just as if we were out. Currently, we go, we can have three calls at the exact same time, and we don't have a staffing model, nobody has a staffing model to meet that saw.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would have to depend on everybody at that point.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Chief Porter? Have a chief, please. Solid waste of garbage?
Solid waste and garbage, certainly last but not least.
Mr. Harper?
Pretty nice.
We'll make this fast. Again, just going over the last meeting and what we discussed, we have not had any decision in regards to the university, so it's popular, Derek Leach, and he's going to put that back into the contract that that portion is the responsibility of the college unless they decide to come to us and want to do it. So that's the only change that we'll see in that, in the solid waste agreement with EBI, basic disposal. And then the other thing we had talked about was cleaning up the ordinance to kind of bring it up to date. We've had comments from basic disposal and some that we've looked at eternally. Most of those dealt with, the importance is to have the definitions in our code go along with the definitions of the agreement or vice versa. So we're working on those in the screening data. We're hoping that we'll have that done and we'll be able to give that to the EBI in October twelve for approval, as well, again, go to unlimited, define term of unlimited collection in the near future.
Questions, Mr. Harper?
The new contract, it now covers all entities within College Place, including some of the larger, how do I say this? Rental areas and businesses?
Right now, the way that's written, it would require collection by, although it does, there is, there is part, it's mainly for, I think it's mainly for residential, but it could be...